Okay, let's try again. Can everyone hear me okay? Oh, you're, you know what? You have to mute your computer. I can't hear myself talking the whole time. Okay, good, thank you. Okay, sorry, welcome to the community who's watching. We're, we're present in person, but we are doing our meeting through the Zoom app. So hopefully this can help with sound for everyone to hear better. So again, welcome to our September 22 meeting. It's 6:40 now and I would just like to first take a roll call attendance. Carrie Cunningham. Unmute. It's in the Zoom on the bottom.
Here.
Francine.
Here.
Jason. Scott. And Daisy. Okay, did, hoping that went. Oh, and myself present. So we have a full board here this evening. Okay, and if I can just ask our student representative to lead us in the pledge. We can all stand. We begin this evening with administrators' remarks. And yes? Oh, no, open, no. We weren't an exec. We didn't have exec today. So administrator remarks this evening, Dr. Gosh.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay down there? Okay. Two updates this evening. The first has to do with some, some updated data on the learning choices that our families have selected for their son or daughter. So the latest breakdown of our all remote versus hybrid learners are as follows. We JFK is up 1% since the start of school at 20, and they are at 27%. CV Star is up 2% to 29%. The middle school is held steady since the first day of school at 21%. And the high school has a 3% increase in remote learners for a total of 23%. So that averages out to about 25% of our, of our students are engaged in all remote learning. So as we have, have said from the summer, we have pledged to continue to grow from our strong start through constant evaluation. Examining these numbers and having a pulse on the trends is one part of that evaluation. We're also looking to see if we are able to bring other students back full time possibly, those with more significant learning needs, such as students with, with IEPs. This is a significant undertaking which we are methodically involved in and we will continue to update the board as we make progress. We have several meetings this week on, on that topic. Another part of this ongoing cycle of evaluation is gathering feedback. So this meet, this week we are meeting with teacher focus groups at, at each level. We are also in between this week and next week, meeting with, with liaisons across the board. And finally, we'll be sending out student staff and, and parent surveys by the end of next week. So I just want to thank our, our staff, our teachers, building level administrators. They've been just absolutely incredible and, and they've made this, this work so far. So we're, we would like to thank them for that. The, the final update has to do with a COVID related update and the data dashboard. So at the last board meeting, we talked about the, the governor making a statement saying that school districts would need to report on a daily basis, any new COVID cases. So since the last meeting, we did receive guidance on that and we have been reporting on, on a daily basis to the Department of Health. It's a portal that we enter information into. We have to disaggregate the students that were physically present in school versus those that were attending learning outside of, of school grounds. So the, you're able to see this report card at school covidreportcard.health新York.gov. If anyone is interested, please know that we continue to employ our protocols when a student presents with symptoms. And we are in constant consultation with Dr. Cossaro, our school medical director, as well as the Putnam County Department of Health, both of whom have been excellent partners. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Harrington.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Masika. With tonight's presentation that outlines the board and district goals, I'll defer any of my comments for after Dr. Banlow's presentation and briefly share the goals of the Human Resource Department. I will note now however, that each of the goals that the Human Resource Department has identified as measurable, attainable, and relevant, and certainly aligned with the district and board's goals for the 2020, 2021 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson.
Good evening. Our audit committee met this morning to review the financial statement audit performed this summer for the year ended June 30th, 2020. The district continues to be in good financial health as we travel through these uncertain times. Our external auditor, Alan Cassay from PKF O'Connor Davies, will be in attendance at the October 13th board meeting to present our financial statements. The audit committee also had an opportunity to review the annual risk assessment, which is another layer of audit the district is subject to. The audit committee provided useful feedback to the district. We continue to improve our operations. Fiscal update continuing from our conversation at our last board meeting. The New York State Budget Director recently released a statement last week suggesting that school districts may have acted prematurely in enacting program cuts responding to the state's reduction in their state aid, which is insulting for those districts because they acted on information that was presented to them. He further indicated that when an official plan is formulated by the state, the reductions will be allocated based on economic need, which is going to be a further challenge for Brewster, as Brewster is not considered a high needs district. So while high needs districts such as Yonkers, New York City, Buffalo, Albany, other small cities, will likely not see an increase or a cut of 20%, the challenge is that remaining reduction needed needs to be allocated among all of the other 700 and odd school districts throughout the state. So it's certainly not any more encouraging news and we continue to await for federal assistance. Just a reminder, I'm sure somebody would mention at some point tonight, the census deadline is September 30th. You know, we talk about state aid and it's very important that we report our population as the census is used for allocating state aid. So again, we encourage everybody to go out and fill out, fill out their census. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Banlow.
I'm good. Okay, thank you Jim. Okay. Good evening, members of the board. I have two brief updates today, tonight. One has to do with athletics and the second one is a follow-up to Dr. Gosh's remarks regarding the COVID dashboard. So the first one, I want to let you know that the New York State Public High School Athletic Association, their executive team is meeting tomorrow to go over health and safety protocols for athletics. So we will be getting direction from them. Also, our athletic director, Mr. Dean Barard, I'll have to say, took a real lead in the region. He and Dr. Cossaro and several athletic directors throughout the region are meeting to go over several health and safety concerns, particularly with masks. So they will be sending out information and Mr. Barardo is also planning parent meetings. They're in the works right now. They're meeting this week to share the information with parents and also to answer any questions that parents. There's probably many, many questions that parents have. So I just want to say to the board, the community, thank you for your patience as we begin to roll out athletics in a very safe way for our students. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, the COVID dashboard, my apologies. What, one of the things I want to mention to the board, as Dr. Gosh has said, every single day we have to report in the COVID dashboard. For transparency purposes, you have the website now. All parents can go onto the website to see where, where Brewster is and every other district in the region. And this is, as I said before, this is important data for not only the region, the Department of Health, but also for the entire state, for the governor to, to gauge how we're doing. The important thing to remember is that anytime, any case or anything comes through our attention, we immediately get on a Zoom call with Dr. Cossaro, with Dr. Gosh, who's our COVID coordinator, Dr. Kennedy's our backup COVID coordinator, I'm always on there, and also the Putnam County Department of Health. We take our direction from them and we make sure that if there is anything that we update the community immediately. So I just wanted to share that with the board. And I have to say, we are really in excellent hands, not only with Dr. Gosh, but with Dr. Cossaro, and also with the Putnam County Department of Health. They have been excellent in response. So that concludes my comments.
Thank you. So I, I know that it says the board president remarks, but I would like to actually comment on behalf of the whole board. And I'll give you, if you want to jump in there after me. I just want to take this opportunity to, you know, once again, we're, we're, school's underway now. We're a couple of weeks in. And I want to thank Dr. Banlow, your team, the administrators in this room, and all our administrators in the district, as well as the teachers in this district. And, and honestly, everybody, because I know from our bus drivers to everyone in buildings, every aspect of, of everyone who's working to make us be successful in these times. This is new. We, we are, I mean, you, you guys planned this and strategized and did a lot of work to get us open. And then we hoped for the best and now we're in it and we're seeing, okay, we planned stuff, things are working. Some things need some tweaking, right? And we're, we're figuring it out. And so I just want to thank everyone on behalf of the board for that. And you know, please know that as a board, we, we've supported the process throughout the planning stages. What you identified is what would be a, a, a good model. And we continue to support that work and, you know, everything you're trying to implement and make be successful. And it's not perfect. I don't know if there is such a thing in these times. So we're just going to continue to support everyone who's working in this district and everyone's efforts, because these are stressful times for everyone on all fronts. And I wanted to share that. And I also do want to thank the parents. So you know, we are parents in this room on the board as well. So we are also facing our own frustrations and, you know, we, we may have the same frustrations as, as parents that are emailing the district. But we're also practicing patience and we're doing our best to, to just go with it and, and, and work through the parts that need to be developed still. So I just wanted to mention that and thank you. And we're going to continue to, to just improve and, and do great things. So I don't know if anyone wanted to take a moment to add anything or you're good and move on. Okay, so, um, thank you. You, did you want to say something? Okay, please.
I just wanted to comment on Sonya. Also with all the emails, teachers with the parent university that has been underway. That has been very, very, very good thing.
So we move on now to our student representative. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. If you're in here, I'm saying that I'm here. It's cool. That are in the industry. So like, hey, you wanna applaud everybody who has worked. I'm sorry, I'm limited.
Yeah.
Sir, I'm Dr. Banlow. And we are working for lots of sports in the next three weeks. The high schools looking to do things soccer field and tennis in the next week or so. Uh, we're to do.
Yeah, thank you. It looks like this. I don't know if you can hear that. But we're just working through how to best provide access to our board meetings. And there's some lag time, so we're strategizing how to overcome that issue. Okay. Are we good? I, I don't know, is there, does it help? Is it just because we're in the room or does it help if the community members that are also zooming in, maybe shut down their video, but they can still hear and see us? I don't know if that helps. I don't know if we're. You want to try, try it like this for us to see? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we are moving on to presentations, recognition, discussion. And first up is board and district goals for 2020, 2021. And Dr. Banlow, I'll introduce you to start us off this evening. Okay. So I'll just, I'll preface first that we met, we had a work session some weeks ago and we hashed out this vision of ours for this school year and we're going to present it officially this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Masika. I just wanted to add your, your board comments, thanking the staff. I just wanted to share with the board that several teachers reached out to me and even as I walked around the buildings and they wanted to thank the board, all of us, for bringing back the students because they said they can see in their eyes how happy they are to be back here. And they said, and the teachers, several of them said they feel the same way too. So I wanted to share that with you. So if we go into our presentation, I'm going to ask Mr. Whalen if he could share the presentation on the screen if possible. So we're going to be going through our district goals this evening and I'll start off with the district goals. And then our board president, Ms. Masika, will share the board goals. And then after the board goals, I'm going to ask Mr. Carlson and also Dr. Harrington to share their goals for this year as well. And then we have a short video that we wanted to share with the board. So I hope that everybody enjoys that. So I just want to thank the community members for being so patient. We're just waiting for our video so you can clearly see the goals. And here we go. No, that's not the right one. That's the second one. Okay, so we're going to go into the, the very first goal and I'm going to ask Chris if you can just quick along. I'll let you know, we can go to the next slide. Our first district goal this year and the district goals, the goals that we're going to be sharing, these are the goals for Dr. Gosh, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and myself, Dr. Banlow, the superintendent with the Board of Education's approval. The first goal will be the continuity of health, safety, and instruction during a pandemic. As you know, this cannot take up all of our time, so we have two other goals that we're going to be looking at this evening. But we will be giving, we will be getting quarterly feedback from our families, from parents, from teachers, from staff, regarding the hybrid and remote model. And we will also be able to pivot if we needed to. Hopefully we won't have to go to 100% remote at any point. And I'm going to ask Dr. Gosh if she wouldn't mind jumping in right now and just, she's been head all the way, you know, kind of fully immersed in all of this too. So if she wanted, I'm going to let you kind of share a few things that you're, you've been working on here.
Sure. We just wanted to make sure that when we were writing this goal, that we were looking at really measurable benchmarks that we could, could hit as both a way of, of having this ongoing feedback loop, but also as a commitment device to making sure that we were, you know, doing what we, we need to do in order to get a holistic view of the instructional models that we were delivering and, and using that as a way that is, is actionable and, and supports student learning. So we wanted to take a multifaceted approach to this. Once we have this, as we are gathering this feedback on an ongoing basis, we wanted to, again, then make it, transfer that into any sort of changes that needed to, to happen, but also to look at it from a professional learning perspective. And you know, the professional learning plan is up for approval tonight and that goes into a little bit more detail. But we wanted to make sure we support our new educators, but we also support all educators and, and really this Herculean task that they're undertaking.
Thank you, Dr. Gosh. And the health and safety of our students and staff is, is of the utmost importance, but we also want to make sure that we are continuing our continuity of learning and that is extremely critical. So now we'll go to goal two. All right, so the, the second goal is creating a culture and climate of equity. So of equity in the Brewster Central School District, in which all students feel welcome, appreciated, and as though they belong. So what does the word equity mean? Everybody's like, you know, what does that mean? Equity is being fair and impartial. So to us, with this goal, this is equal educational opportunity for every single student, every one of our students that walk through the door, whether it's based upon race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, whether transgender. Every single one of our students who walk through our door falls under this umbrella of equity. So that is critical to us. We are, we have started our training this summer with our administrators where we've worked on a committee of folks that are working with us and we're starting to break down into subcommittees, which I'm going to let Dr. Gosh talk about in a minute. But it is very, very critical that we build a strong foundation to start this work. And if we don't build a strong foundation, it's not going to carry on. And this is not work that's just going to be a one-year goal. This is something that has to live. And you're going to see in a minute, we're going to be talking about Brewster Vision 2025 and we'd like to make sure that that lives within that vision, hopefully, that the community members, both in and out of the district, decide together that we will be working on. So Dr. Gosh, did you want to add anything about your work with the committee or do you think I covered it?
Just that we very much feel the need for the urgency of this work. But please know that this goal is not for this particular year, not for us to all walk away in June and say, you know what? We are, we have all the skills that we need in order to do this right. This is, as you said, a multi-year effort. This is about sustainability. This is about making sure that our, our staff have the skills in order to support this work and about looking, pivoting forward and looking forward to what, how we can change some things that need to be changed around here in a, in a long-term sort of way. The other component to this, of course, we have our work with, with NYU and the Metro Center for Transformation and Equity. But we also have community groups that we're engaging as well as some student groups. So the community groups, we're calling it the Equity Collaborative. That group will be breaking into sub-collaboratives focused on certain areas such as curriculum and instruction, extracurricular activities, community partnerships, et cetera, all outcomes that came from the desire of that group. And what will happen is these sub-collaboratives will be meeting and, and really looking at granular details and reporting back to this larger group while we continue to, to move forward.
Okay, great. And also I just want to let the board know that this was on our radar long before everything started in our country. These were conversations that we were having at lower Hudson Superintendent Council meetings, NYU came out. So this is something that's really, really critically important. And it is very, very important that all voices come to the table because these are all of our, our students. So as we move forward in this process, whether it's this year or years that follow, we want to make sure that everybody who wants to be involved, please get involved. So that, that was the other goal. I'm sorry, I went a little bit too long with that. And then the third goal is our Brewster Vision 2025. And we're going to be delving deeper into this in the next presentation. And I have a gentleman from the Cambridge Group that I'm going to introduce shortly. But now, more than ever, in this environment that we are living in right now, we need to have a roadmap. We need to carefully look at our financial resources that is in excellent hands, our human relation, our human resources that's also in excellent hands, our curriculum that's in excellent hands. We need to look at our facilities. We need a, a committee to come together to create a five-year roadmap for where everybody in this community, where you want to take the district. So Brewster Vision 2025, we're going to talk about that in the next presentation. Kevin will delve into it deeper, but it is so critical for us to have a roadmap as to where everybody within the Brewster community wants to see this district grow. There's a lot of great things happening in the district. We're going to build on those things, but there might be some momentum for moving forward that everybody who's coming to the table wants to see. So Dr. Gosh, did you want to add anything at all from, oh, the SCP piece? Could you add that?
Last year, the, the SCP Steering Committee re-engaged with that work. We got a little bit interrupted, but we'll be beginning again this year. And the idea is that we need to take stock of, of what we have been able to do in terms of the SCP and roll that work into their, their broader strategic plan, but continue it as a, the curriculum instruction and, and assessment work moving forward. So there's the continuity between the, the two plans with a clear direction moving forward.
Thank you. So that, that concludes our district's goals at this point. Now I'm going to ask Ms. Masika, our board president, to give the board goals.
Okay, thank you. And so the, when we, we work out the district goals, you know, it's, it's a big conversation and we work them out. The board and the district superintendent, right, come together to, to come up with that vision. And the board then needs to, we do a ton of things, but we also need to come up with our focus and how we're going to support the work of the, the district goals and make them specific to us. So for this year, first, we came up with our, for our first goal, expand community relations. It's been a theme of ours for a few years now and we're going to continue to expand on that. And some examples of things that we will do and there'll be more discussion, you know, for things for us to, to come up with. But for example, the district sends out a newsletter, I think, right now twice a year. So we maybe will expand, you know, we always have like a little board corner, but maybe we'll expand on what we include in that. We also would like to increase the board's social media presence. We're not sure what that's going to look like. We have a policy up for review as we will discuss later on. And, you know, we want to be, be supportive of what the district's doing. And we'll figure out that through further conversations as the year goes on. And the district is sending out a lot of surveys. So a few years, two years ago now, I think, the board sent out a survey last year, kind of got interrupted with COVID. And, you know, we still were going to do that. It was a board-specific survey and how are we doing? And for the community to have an opportunity to respond. But with so much going on and so many surveys, it's, it's a lot, I think. You know, as a parent even, we, we get a lot. So we'd like to still get feedback from the community about the board. And perhaps when it's appropriate, include a question with. and perhaps when it's appropriate, include a question with each survey that goes out or surveys that are appropriate for us to include something and therefore we can get feedback that way as well. We'd like to further connect with our ENL and ESL parents. We are always strategizing, we want to really make sure that our community can come together as a whole and work together and that all parents feel part of the community and part of the discussion. And also, we're looking to find new ways to inform all members of our community who the board is and what we do and encourage involvement. You know, I think that there's still a lot, you know, social media is a tough, tough thing and our community have their go-to places. But that stuff doesn't come directly to us and, you know, sometimes it's time pass before important information gets to us. So we want to just figure out, you know, how we're gonna do some of those things. So we'll have some work sessions throughout the year, short, brief ones on certain topics to help us strategize on how we'll achieve these, this, these particular, the breakdown of this particular goal. Okay, our second goal for the year is to continue to support all employees of the district by increasing supportive and encouraging communication and when possible, our physical presence in the schools. So, you know, we do support the work here, we set the vision for the year, but we want to make sure, because while we represent, we're here to, you know, represent all students, we also represent the entire community. So we want to make sure that that we maintain that connection with our, the employees of the districts, that they know that they're valued and, you know, find ways to do that. Our third goal will be to engage in promoting a district-wide culture in the schools that embraces and implements equity practices for all students by supporting the efforts of the superintendent and participating in board trainings. So as Dr. Banlow discussed, it is a, it's an ongoing focus, it's not something new, but we just want to really get behind that effort. And we actually have a training coming up that we're, I think we've all signed up to try to attend and to continue that and educating ourselves so that we are more informed in the work that is going to be done and continue to be done in the district. So that's a brief overview and like I said, we'll have short work sessions throughout the school year to focus in on different items that we can then get out and implement these. And I don't know if anyone wanted to add anything. Looking around, we're good, okay. Yep, so that's it for me. And I think you mentioned Dr. Harrington is next up?
Okay. All right, terrific, thank you. First, aligned to Dr. Banlow and Dr. Gosh's first goal regarding health and safety during this pandemic. Human Resources certainly recognizes that these unforeseen circumstances require ongoing diligence to successfully maintain a personal and approachable HR department, particularly given that the work environment may continue to be more virtual in nature. In part, this includes a transition to a new platform, Schoolfront, that allows for the digitization of personnel records and streamlined systems for onboarding to provide greater efficiency. Second, aligned with Dr. Banlow and Dr. Gosh's goals specific to culture and climate, HR recognizes its critical role in assisting in the district's commitment to diversity and cultural competence through its hiring process specifically. So to this end, the department has increasingly sought to embed specific practices and procedures to ensure recommended candidates increasingly reflect the diversity of our student demographic and demonstrate a high cultural competency necessary to support our student population. As such, we have increasingly focused on broader opportunities to identify diverse candidates when a vacancy exists and we have adopted interview questions that better allow our administrators to assess a candidate's cultural competency and commitment to diversity and equity. And finally, a goal that should exist each year for a Human Resource Department includes continued efforts to build and grow healthy labor relations, certainly with our four bargaining units, particularly as we move into contract negotiations with each of these units this year. Of course, every healthy relationship requires the good intentions of two people or two sides and the willingness from each to engage in constructive dialogue. This year and every year, it's the intent and the goal of the department to effectively communicate and build healthy labor relations. So that's our three goals.
Okay, in terms of finance and operations, on a micro level, we discussed actually this morning in our audit committee, which actually ended up being one of the recommendations from the internal audit, which was convenient because it was already one of our district goals, much like Dr. Harrington mentioned. Recognizing that in this environment, there may need, there may become another need for working from home. And because of that, we're working to implement paperless timesheet to improve efficiency from a payroll perspective. On an organizational level, two things that will tie in with the Vision 2025, we'd like to establish a facilities committee or task force to review the building condition survey, which is completed and in edit with our architects and engineers at the moment, identifying future capital needs for infrastructure and to improve the learning environment. Third goal is to, as we discussed at our last board meeting, continuously report out to the board superintendent of the community the financial impact of COVID-19 in preparation for a challenging 2122 budget.
So, thank you, Mr. Carlson. So at this time, I'm gonna ask Mr. Whelan to share a video that was put together just to give you some highlights, members of the board of the students in their first week or two of school. Thank you, Mr. Whelan. So there is music in the background, I'm trying not to be too picky. Here we go. Thank you, Mr. Whelan. So that concludes our board and district goals. And Ms. Masika, if you'd like, I can go right into the next.
Yes, next up will be our Brewster Vision 2025 presentation with Kevin Kastner from Cambridge Strategic Services. So, thank you.
Thank you. So to help us with the critical work of Brewster Vision 2025, we need to have a really great consultant. So the Cambridge Group has been around for years and years and years. They have an excellent reputation throughout the nation. I actually worked with them when I was in a previous district. So tonight, I'm going to ask, Mr. Kevin Kastner is with us virtually because he's on the naughty state list, he can't come to New York, but we want to thank him for joining us. So, Kevin, are you there with us?
I am. I just clicked start my video, I think the mute's off.
And, hold on, Kev. Okay, can?
Can you hear me?
Okay. Jim? Kev, hold on one second, we're just making sure everybody can hear you. Thank you. Okay, okay, Mr. Kastner, thank you for joining us, go ahead.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Branlow. It would be an honor to work with your system, can you hear me? Testing.
We can hear you.
Ready to go?
Yes, yes.
Okay, is Chris ready when I'm going to need to do a screen share? Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and just introduce myself. My name is Kevin Kastner. I am a former superintendent from Almarle County in Virginia, where I spent about a dozen years, I've been an interim a couple times, but since retiring in 2006, I've been involved in over 40 superintendent searches and probably about 50 strategic plans. 10 years ago, I became the president of Cambridge. To create a little context, I've been talking with your school system since November in sharing some initial work on Cambridge, even though Lori has a background, I still have had a meeting in January with staff. To create a little bit more context, because part of this is developing a relationship of your consultant and a trust with the members of your community and your school division. I have had the opportunity to do some work in New York. I have worked in Ithaca with Dr. Lavelle Brown. He was a colleague of mine and in essence, I've been a member and I think recently he was your New York Superintendent of the Year. In addition, when we had Race to the Top, I actually had New York and was part of awarding New York about $500 million and learned a lot from about a 2,000-page report that we had to go through. So I learned your system that way. Also have been recently involved in the Rochester Superintendent Search and gotten to know New York a little bit more from that. On more of a personal side, I have a son who today, as a seventh grader, spent six hours on Zoom. Almarle County doesn't yet have students attending the system, so I've watched him. And I also have a wife who is the director of elementary schools, has 16 elementary schools, and have watched her go through all the challenges that you're navigating and knowing that things are just different now. And with all that as a context, the fact that you're thinking about going into a strategic plan to complement the goals that you already have, I don't think the timing could be better. I was actually talking with two systems today, one in Nebraska and one in Arkansas, and we actually started doing strategic planning work in February. Now we're gonna have to get back to it and all the work that we did in February is gonna be a need to be a do-over. So everything that you're doing in a good district, starting with the process that would happen over the next several months, creates something for everybody just to unify under a new way. Nobody wants to think that you're gonna go back and do what you did last February. That's over. So we're in a new norm. And with that, if I could have the first slide, please, on why strategic planning? The whole idea, you can click through all of them, engaging your community, creating partnerships with your public, creating an internal and external vision, talking about priorities for spending. You're never gonna have enough money, so how do you prioritize? And determine even to abandon some things. One of the things that superintendent and the school board do is by bringing in someone like an external facilitator, is you're going to allow that external facilitator, you're putting a trust in the members of a representative group of your community. Instead of having something coming from the superintendent or the board top-down, you're trying to create a process of engagement that almost has the wisdom of looking at how everybody else in the community is looking at it. And you reach a point that when the board and the superintendent receive the product of the plan, there should be a much greater confidence, a much greater transparency and information that would put the system at a different level than when you would start the strategic plan. Next slide, please. You'll find the Cambridge process is going to be student-focused. All the goals are gonna be student-related, they're also gonna be measurable. You're going to have the community involved, you're gonna have the participation of, in the end, you could have several hundred people and there'll be many hours that people will engage in this over several months. We don't do things by vote. When we have the group that works on the plan, we do agreement. Until everybody in the room agrees, then we will not take something to be part of the plan because we don't want anyone say, well, I didn't go into that, it wasn't part of that. The actionable piece, when I became president of Cambridge, from a superintendent's perspective, I believe in accountability and measurable progress and we have to work on the accountability of that over a period of five years. And this is what a plan has to do. It can't be a paper document, it has to go to the point, how is your school system going to be different? Next slide, please. A lot of this goes back to your belief system. And if, what I heard tonight, as you all did, what you're trying to do for all of your students, not just your best students, you already are doing a lot of trying to implement things for the well-being, trying to help them prepare to be successful and try to look at the wealth that you have in each student. You've showed those beliefs just by what I listened to tonight. However, we're looking at these beliefs in a new lens. Whether it's gonna be social justice or whether it's gonna be blended learning, all of this is going to be creating new norms. And the process that you'll have with the strategic plan is gonna enable you, I think, to get into that type of depth and that type of ownership that you're gonna have throughout the internal and external part of your district. Next slide, please. The whole idea of what's on the right is to bring something that's not just top-down, but you're trying to do the school and the but you're trying to do the school and the central office. You're trying to have something that, you have the advantage of a system that's around 3,000 students. You have four schools. You can do many things that large systems can't in regard to alignment and everybody understanding and also participating, and at times, helping things get better by them giving suggestions of how you can further refine what you're going to develop. The next slide. So, the important part of looking at this and how a strategic plan is different than a school system as it goes from year to year. And you do go year to year, and you try to get better. That's your culture. But in order to perhaps take advantage of the home, the school, and the community in a much more, I think, broader way, that's why you're dealing with the whole idea of a triangle of support. It takes longer. It's not fast. But by creating this engagement, you have the opportunity that I think you can get to a greater depth. And as Lori has been involved in this process and her other system, she knows that this is the type of thing that just kind of builds upon a lot of the good things you already do in the district. Next slide, please. You know, when you're talking about what a strategic plan is about, and there have been times when we talked about what has happened since 30 years ago when many of us were in school. But what about the last six months? We're in a different world now. So, the question of that will be very part of the discussions that you'll have. And the whole idea, as you're going to build a strategic plan, your current organization, the capacity you currently have, has to go beyond that. And to do that in a strategic way, that's what this plan will do as it gets presented to the school board and the superintendent and will guide you and will assist some of your district and also board goals as you get into the implementation year. This year would be the development of the plan. It's the following year that will be the implementation. But it obviously is going to build upon some of the things that you're already working on as you're addressing some of the new challenges. Next slide. When you look at a plan and you look at where you are right here, September '22, your momentum is positioned that way. But when you look at the green area, in working with the group of your people, you're still going to have aspirations beyond where you want to go. Even the goals that you have that you're using this school year are aspirational. Now, they have to get into the implementation part, the action steps you're going to have. When you do a strategic plan, the strategic plan job is to go beyond your current momentum into aspirations and also to discuss abandonment. This is the essence of a strategic plan. Next slide, please. The strategic plan process has three stages. The first stage on Phase One readiness is part of what this meeting is tonight. I'm glad that members of your community can also be able to hear some of this because eventually, what we'd like to consider is to have some sort of a community summit to start to build participation readiness, also training initially of some of your district staff and even specifically some of your principals. So, the Phase One stage, it depends on when you want to start this. Do you want to start in November? Do you want to start in December? Do you want to start it in January? One of the things, in order to get a plan done this year, though, you're going to have to consider at the latest, doing a January start. The design of the plan is when you bring your strategic plan team together, and they will develop a draft plan. And then, you'll have an action planning groups that will actually then take the strategies of the draft plan, create action plans, and then the group will come back before finalizing the plan before they present it to the board. Phase Three is when you get into the implementation, when the superintendent, the board goals, and people are assigned to the priorities you're going to have for what you're going to think is most important to do that goes beyond where you currently are doing things in your system. Next slide. There are different roles. The strategic planning team is a role that's going to be made up of 25, 30 people. I'm going to talk about who those will be. The fact that a school board and a superintendent go through this process and trust this group, there still will be the superintendent and two board members on the strategic planning team. There also would be an internal coordinator that would assist on a daily basis to work through the system with the external facilitator. And also, there would be action teams. You certainly are going to involve over 100 people involving this process. And I can, you do have some information I've shared that goes in greater detail how this works. Next slide. Members of the strategic planning team would be parents, business leaders, maybe some of the people on your county councils, city councils, the board members, secondary and elementary staff, central office staff, and most importantly, you should have at least four students. And there'll be times when you get into the action plan. The action plan team should be going into some of your schools, and maybe they should be doing some job shadowing with some of your students because a lot of the work that they're going to be trying to do has to come up from a student perspective, and they have so much to share. And that whole student group becomes so valuable in this process. Next slide, please. When you're developing a strategic plan, you're going to notice the blue area, that you're going to develop beliefs, you're going to develop missions, objectives, and strategies, and have parameters. One of the advantages of an external facilitator is when you work with the strategic planning group, you're going to have to talk about strengths, but you're also going to have to talk about weaknesses, and you're going to have to talk about challenges. And it's a lot harder to do it if you're doing it just with internal people. And as a facilitator, there's a lot of things that I can help with to perhaps make sure that we don't leave any elephants that haven't been discussed in the room. The other advantage of an external facilitator is I work across the country. I know what's happening in so many other different places that can help at least share what other people are doing and just to make sure that we aren't going to be missing things as we're trying to address how we want to try to create this game plan with your strategic plan. The area below in yellow are your action teams. Each of your action teams, you're going to have 10 to 15 people. And those action teams are going to go through a very important process that the five steps that you do in action planning, your second step is research and development. And that means you go and benchmark everything you're doing in your system, not just in New York, not just in this country, but what's happening globally. So, there's that important step and the investment in the type of time in that important step that doesn't happen as you go to year to year. When you were involved in 2016, and I know Sonia, you were on that group. I don't know all the things that you did when you developed that plan, but hopefully, if there were some good things there that I need to be aware of, that we want to continue in the plan that we would do here, we want to benefit from that. But I will tell you that the Cambridge process, I think if you talk to any of the people we work with, it has the potential to make a great difference in a school system. And it's just, it's a good, it's just a good best practice. So, these are the whole things that will be part of the plan. And if I go to the next slide, please. And the whole idea of the action plan, the real work, is when you get in with the action teams. And they're the ones that are going to have to figure out how you're going to go beyond your present system. And the members of those teams are the experts that you have in your school system. That's where you're taking the advantage of all those people working under the direction and also the fact that they know what's working, but they also can talk about, when you're making a roadmap, what they're going to be needing to do to get to the next level. Next step, next slide, please. When you are going to talk about this as a board and you need to have the timing right, you cannot do the design of a strategic plan without having the 25 or 30 people in a room. You need to be ready for that. Now, you can do that with social distancing, but you can't do it on Zoom. So, when you're thinking about, when you're ready to get into Phase One readiness in which it would involve an initial visit with me and the system, talking with members of your superintendent's group and also your principals, members of the community, that's when you would start. My suggestion is November, December might be best. And then, you get into perhaps the action or the strategic plan in January, and you finish it up by May or June. Next slide, please. This is pretty much a summary. What you want to try to do is take advantage of the goodwill of all the people and trying to understand that they're going to make the type of decisions in the best interest, not just of some children, but all your children. There are people that naturally, they're going to have the interest of their own child. But as a school system and you as board members, you have to have that vision for everybody. And that was pretty much stated in some of your goals today. The next slide, please. The whole idea, when you're getting involved in this, the whole idea of the best, now, John Dewey's been around over 100 years ago. But the whole idea that when you're doing this, it's working about what we want for all the children, not just for the best and the brightest, but every child in your district. You have diversity in your district. You certainly know that these issues and the needs, particularly when you're getting into mental health issues, the whole idea of the anxiety that kids have and the challenges they're having. This isn't just about academic. This is about the whole child. And we're seeing more and more work done in strategic plans of getting into that type of depth and the whole idea of how we can support parents in better ways and how we can support children on many things that don't always get said. And so, I've noticed that as we're working in these things, I suspect that there might be some things in social justice that will get into this because everybody is looking at these things with a new lens. And I think everybody knows that we just can't do a redo. We've got to go into a new level of how we're working with everything. This concludes my presentation. I certainly would welcome any questions you might have. And thank you for the opportunity, and it would be an honor to work with you.
I just want to say thank you so much for your presentation and for sharing all the insights that you provided. And yes, thanks for acknowledging that I was on that committee five years ago. And from what I'm seeing from your presentation, there are some distinctions. And I don't know, I'll offer up to the board if anyone has questions that you'd like to ask. Now would be the time. We do have it on the agenda later as an action item. I mean, just from so far, from what I've gathered and some notes that I took, I did appreciate your approach to the work. And we had quite a few people involved in our process five years ago. But you definitely present a much more comprehensive approach, a lot more people involved, a lot of drilling down to get very specific. And I appreciated also how you mentioned in the work that the goal is to have full agreement. And when you said that, I thought, well, that's a big task. But I agree with the idea behind it, that you really want everyone to feel invested in the direction and in the work. So, if anyone else has any particular questions, just looking around the room.
A quick question regards to the timeline you were discussing. I know you mentioned specifically that it is best to get the main groups together socially distanced. Going through the fall right now, who knows what we're going to lean to. Is there an option or is it feasibly that this plan would work? God forbid, you do have to go full distance, and we're not able to socially gather. Is there a part of this plan that works or would just that would delay your timeline?
Scott, when you're working with that group of 25, 30 people, you're going to be doing, the presentation of the facilitator takes about the first 20% of the time you're going to spend over three days. All of the other time is going to be working with breakout groups. And what you do with the breakout groups, you're going to actually change different groups two or three times so that everybody learns how to work together. I don't have the skills to know how you can do that through Zoom, and even if you have your extra areas. And this is something that I would rather wait a month until there can be a comfort. I can see everybody wearing masks. I can see everybody doing the types of best practices you're even doing in the schools. But I think it probably is up for discussion. But I would rather, I don't know if I could create the quality by trying to do it in doing it over Zoom. But I think it's a great question, and that's why all my work kind of pretty much stopped last March. And we've been waiting, and I am starting to get back into it with some other school systems where they think they're going to be ready around November. But each state is a little bit different. I hope that at least begins to address a little bit about your question. And I think that's something you, the board and the superintendent, need to talk about.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the board that has anything? Looking around the room, no? Okay, okay. Dr. Brandlow, is there anything you'd like to follow up with?
I just would like to thank Kevin for joining us this evening. And we're hoping and looking forward to working with you. And I certainly echo what Kevin said about that you really need to be in person to make this happen. So, we're going to think positive. Hopefully, that will happen. But it really is, and we could find a way. We could find a way. Thank you, Kevin. You can hang in there with us.
Well, I do want to say, I was pleased to have the opportunity to watch all you working together. I know you have a good system, and I hope we have a chance to work together. Hope you all have a good evening, and I appreciate all the hard work you all must be doing.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So, now we move on to any public remarks that may have come in to the board via email that specifically relate to our action items. And I don't believe we had any between this meeting and this. No? Okay, so then, we can just move on to our action items. And first up is approval of Cambridge Group proposal for Brewster Vision 2025. And I need a motion for this item, please. Carrie, thank you. And a second. Eric. And, hold on a second. Chris, can I ask you a question? The, I see that there is a camera on all of us. Can, if we all raise our hands high enough, can we be seen? Or is that still a screen that can be switched off from people? We can, okay, so then, I don't have to do roll call stuff. So, if you all, just make sure you raise your hands high enough when you move. when you motion and second also, because people maybe can't see you're here. We'll make sure one way or the other they're getting you. So we have a motion and a second. I just need to know all those, no, we're motion and second, discussion, please. I'm sorry.
Sonya, I just want to add, this item was identified last year throughout the budget process. It's included in the 21, or excuse me, 2021 school budget as anticipated that we'd be pursuing this work.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so from the board, any discussion you'd like to have on this?
If I could just, I looked through it briefly. What kind of, it is budgeted for, what kind of costs have we set aside for this?
So the agreement is for $18,000. Again, the full amount was included in the 2021 school budget.
Anyone else?
I would just add that we have discussed this before, as Victor said, in the context of budget discussions. And, you know, I can't help but think that every successful business or organization or team or family has a plan. It lends itself to organization, to having everyone be heard, to having the needs of everyone being met. And I really like to hear like that there is going to be a large group involved, community members, students, faculty, everyone. So it just seems very common sense to me for a district, you know, our size. I think we really could benefit from, you know, a long-term plan and not separate plans that we may have now. So I'm trying to add that.
I'll, yeah, I'd like to kind of add to that. So the work we did five years ago, it was, you know, I think at that time in the district, there had been many attempts at plans from what I had heard. And there was concern as to whether we were going to stick to this new plan. Is it, you know, another thing? And we did, we were in year five. I know there were some delays and things along the way. But I was proud of us as a district for sticking with it and seeing it through. We're going to complete this year and continue to build on that. So none of that goes away. We just, I think it is important. We proved to ourselves we can do it, that it was beneficial to us. It all brought us together. I think brought us, you know, working together. And I do, I agree with this one. That kind of, I think the one we're still living in allowed us to have a really solid foundation of working together this way and building something. And the things we built in it are, will stay and live on. And, you know, we do need a, where are we going next? What's next? And how are we building on what we already have? And I like the idea that we're going to bring all the different pieces of the district into one vision. So we're not, you know, in two years going, oh, shoot, we need to do this or whatever. We're having a very extensive conversation. And I think it's crucial. I think it, you know, to what you're saying, I think it makes sense. And it helps us, it helps us to be more strategic and, you know, and financially as well. So we know what we're doing, not just figuring it out every other minute. So, but, just to make that.
So I guess my comments, just the, I would just say that the deeper I get into, the deeper I dive into the Board of Education and this school district, the more amazed I become at the work of this board, my colleagues on the board, the administration, the superintendent. In researching, you know, for this position, I went through the strategic plan, and I was amazed at that plan. And listening to Mr. Kastner, I'm amazed at his presentation. As some of you know, I have, I had a lot of questions. And a lot of my questions, I believe now, was premature based on everything I heard, based on what I heard from Mr. Harrington, based on what I heard from Dr. Bandlow. And I echo what Carrie said, that, you know, basically it's a, I think this will go a long way. It's a cost of the district doing business. And I think it would only, it would give a lot of returns to the district. So, that was my comment.
Anyone else? No? Okay. So we have our motion and a second. And so now we'll just go to the vote. And I think, oh, good, you've zoomed in on us. So, great, I think at this point it's just all those in favor. Seven. And any opposed? None opposed? So the motion passes seven zero. Okay, great, thank you. I did that right, right? Because I'm between Zoom and everything. Okay. Next action item is the approval of instructional services contracts for A. Deveraux Foundation and B. Cerebral Policy of Westchester.
Yes, Sonya, these contracts were reviewed by our attorneys and are recommended for approval by our Director of Pupil Personnel Services.
Okay, great, thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Francine, thank you. And Jason, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Seven. Any opposed? None, so motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Action item number three, disposal of district property.
Okay, yes, these items are being recommended for disposal in accordance with Board of Education policy.
Great, thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Daisy, thank you. And Carrie, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Seven, all those opposed? Zero, motion passes seven zero. Action item number four, approval of policies. Approval of policies first read, policy 1110, School Board Legal Status and Authority 1110-R, Board Member Social Media Use Policy 5681, School Safety Plans Policy 7320, Drug and Alcohol Abuse Policy 7540, Dignity for All Students Act.
All policies and regulations that are the part of the action item today are up for a first read. Please know that policy 1110 is an existing policy with modifications. 1110R, however, is a brand-new regulation attached to 1110. The updates for 5681, 7320, and 7540 represent updated language to align with general guidance that was given by the New York State Comptroller. They have been reviewed by the policy committee. We submit them for your approval.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second, please. Eric and Daisy, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? I did have something, I wanted to, just give me one second. Because I'm camcording the room. There was something in here, I just want to find the exact language. Just forgot if it was the first one or the second one. It had something to do with, the language was about the board president. The second one? Maybe the second, I'm looking at it right now. Sorry, I'm pulling up.
In 1110, the policy itself, at the bottom of page one.
Okay.
Is that, it references only the board president? Is that what you're looking for?
So I think for me, that's one part. There was another part as well. But for me, that part, it's just a little confusing in how it reads. Because it starts off to make statements on behalf of the board. But then the next sentence says, "If individual board members post in social media regarding district or board affairs, they must make it clear." Is that on their personal? Like, so we haven't quite worked out yet the distinction between what our role is. Are we allowed to post? If we post on the district's, some district's social media versus our personal social media? And I think that there might need to be some language about that distinction. And maybe even ask legal for the personal, you know, personal social media, do we have to make that distinction in there? So, because right now, it's it's not clear which social media we're talking about. Just, it's just any, it seems social media period. But there definitely is, there are two. And in the district world of social media, that's one. So, you know, the president or vice president is doing it on behalf of the board. And let's say, you know, Carrie wants, or I'm sorry, Eric wants to say, you know, great job to the team. I don't know. Does he have to say, oh, but I'm saying this as a, as a parent? You know, it's, so I think that, I don't know. I just feel like there needs to be a little bit more about if it's district versus personal. And if I'm on my personal social media, my own Instagram, do I need to say, you know, I say whatever I want? Do I need to say, well, I'm just talking as a parent, but it's mine? And I don't know if that distinction needs to be made there. It's just some clarity on that. That was one thing. And then I wanted to also add, I was reading, I don't know, I read so many different articles, and I should have written down the reference. But in terms of, I don't know, there's language in terms of consequence, right? So free speech is something we support. And, but at the same time, our actions may come with consequences. But those consequences are defined by law. So we can't specifically say if someone violates this in a certain way. It's specifically going to have a certain type of consequence. But I think there could be some language that, you know, under the law, if, whatever, there could be some action taken by a board. Because there are some circumstances in which we can and others we cannot. And I think that was kind of a big contentious issue with our community, that they didn't understand the laws around certain actions that we can take when it comes to free speech. And then there are contexts in which we can. And it would be, I think, helpful for the board to know where those lines get drawn. You know, if you are speaking, if it's at a board meeting and you're saying certain things, we're held accountable differently than if I'm in my house and my personal social media. There can be social backlash to that. But in this room, there could be a different level of consequence. So I just, I think if we could get a little more language to that, since it's a first read. Okay, and there was one other thing, I'm sorry. So some of that might actually go in the second policy, the R one. I know, like in that, the 1110 was one part, but 11R looks, 1110R looks like it expands on it. Oh, yeah, it was in the second policy, 1110R. So where it says, "Board members should also note the following." I, and I'd like the board's opinion on this. It says, for example, "The first bullet point without prior approval from the board president." I would rather say the, I wouldn't want to give any board president the sole discretion over any of this. I think it should be the majority of a board. Because I singularly, even as a board president, can't permit any other one board person to do anything. I don't have that authority. But the majority of the board can agree to designate a person for something. Does that make sense? So it just, the way it reads right now, it gives the board president authority that I don't think they really have. Nor should they have. I wouldn't want to create that scenario. So anywhere, as I'm reading through it, anywhere where it implies, let's see the second one. Yeah. The bullet point?
The first one pertains to technically, I guess, school property, whether it's, it says logos, things directly related to the school. So as a senior representative of the board or the superintendent's office, I mean, that's who the intellectual property, let's say, belongs to. So you would have, you're not generalizing what they can and can't do overall. It's just, these are school logos, these are school property, this is our intellectual property. So somebody has to have authority over it. Now, if you want to think the whole board should do it, but that to me is a more of a simpler piece. It's, you're not policing everything. You're just saying, you can't put the bear logo up. Certain things related to the school that, let's say, Jen Gary's office uses. You have to have permission to do the logos, the pieces like that. You know, if there's a standard letterhead that we use to issue our letters on. Now, us as individuals, unless we get permission up, using the standard letterhead. And I think that's what that one maybe means. So it's pretty tight, it's not open-ended.
How does, that's why I asked, I mean, how does everyone else feel? Jason?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Jason.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Oh, I was just going to say that I'm not sure any one of us knows what, you know, is copyrighted or owned by the district. I have, you know, I would have no idea.
I would have to ask, right?
Right, we see all sorts of bears. We see all sorts of, you know, different fonts. So I don't even know if we would know we were violating something. If we, you know, if I post a picture of my daughter in the gym and then behind it is the mat with the bear on it, I assume that is not a violation. But I don't really know. You know what I mean? I, I'm not, I'm not clear on logos. Because it says somewhere else, the, further down, there's a bullet, "Respect copyright and fair use. Be mindful of the copyright and intellectual property rights of others in the Brewster Central School District." Again, I don't know what copyright or intellectual property rights the district has. So I guess, you know, it, that may not have to be in here, but maybe it's something that is provided to us, you know, when you make, when you get on the board or something, just so that you know.
We could put it in our manual.
What we're talking about, you know, and what it really means. Because it, it seems like it doesn't mean that I can't post a picture in the gym.
Maybe like a media guide related to our, Jen Gary's office, there's a little thing they provide. This is what you can't, can't do, simple stuff. And that way it can be updated. If we put it into our policy and we make it too specific, that every time something changes, we've got to change our policy. So if we can refer to a central reference, then we don't have to keep updating ours. It's just, a lot of the stuff they do is, until the state changes a piece, it's just referred to the main document. So let's just keep referring to the main document. You don't want to get too specific, because it'll just bite us.
So, so, yeah, I hear what you're saying in that regard. And I guess if we have, if we're clear on, if, you know, if we can get clarification for the board for us, because I don't even know, in this case, if Scott's like, hey, Sonya, I want to do this, would you like? Let me call somebody. Right, so. So, yeah. So yeah, I guess just we need, because in that case, if we had something more defined or clearer, but just a better understanding of certain contexts, then I could say, okay, I can reference him, yep, you're good with this one. And so in that context, so I'm okay with it staying this way. If we just have some kind of clarification for us to know what we could be violating if we did something. Okay. That's it for me. Anyone else?
To go back to, you, you talked about consequences for speech and you wanted that to be raised. I was gonna say, it, it may be an issue for maybe the board, the school's attorneys. There are state Department of Education cases which talk about consequences for conduct of, of school administration officials of Board of Education. And then there's some of them actually lay out, a lot of it talks about, you know, if, say, if a board member or does something that interferes, that the consequences of it are interferes with that, that member or the board as a whole being able to, to do its job.
Were those in, in New York?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it, it may be something that the, the, the school's attorneys want to look at, because that language can possibly be put into the, the policy.
Yeah, if it's helpful, because I know everything ultimately, you know, a board member could take it up to the commissioner who would ultimately decide.
But like, like all cases, and Carrie knows, you know, a lot of cases set forth criteria or burden that the state commission would have to meet. And sometimes the language is helpful.
Okay. Daisy, were you gonna add something? You're unmuted, right? Sorry.
Okay, going back to policy 1110. The third paragraph where it says, the Board of Education is a seven-member board elected by district residents. Each member of the board serves for three years. So I would think that maybe we should, like Jason and I, because we're serving as a special term, also include that there. Because I just feel like that will also just flow in the future if we do have new board members that are appointed, like a one-year term. They're still responsible.
Paragraph about how appointments work?
Yeah, because like, like when I first read this, like, I was like, okay, well, each board member serves three years. But if somebody's reading it and they don't know, like, for example, Jason and I, that we're serving one year, they're gonna assume, well, they're gonna be on.
Like, why did they leave or where'd they go if they missed something? Yeah, I mean, we could look, right, look into that and see how do appointments work?
Isn't there a section, and there's already a section in our manual that explains it, but it's not in that paragraph? Because there is a place that tells you what happens if you do this, what happens if you step away or someone leaves, there's a way to fill the spots. And it tells, explains how your positions are handled, maybe you can just reference that piece. Because it's already, it is already outlined in the other document, we'll just have to reference it.
Yeah, I think references would be.
Just to tell you where to go.
You know what, also, for that same paragraph, and I, I have this in my notes, I just, I forgot until, thank you for reminding me by bringing it up again. I think it should say specifically Brewster. Because I know this is a Brewster policy, but not every district in New York is a seven-member board. Some are five, some are nine. So the Brewster Board of Education is a seven-member board. I know it seems silly, but if someone's reading it, they might make a false assumption that, oh, all school boards are seven members, when in fact, just, you know, Brewster is specifically. Well, our board manual's already been, been borrowed by many, so, which is fine, it's a compliment. Yeah.
Can I, I just want to say one thing on what Daisy raised. I wouldn't get into great detail in terms of the, you know, appointment procedure or special election. It's, you know, it could just be something general.
Exceptions.
With, with, with certain limited exceptions which are set forth in and you can.
Maybe reference the law. Yeah, because it's really.
I don't think it's necessary to go into a paragraph on, on what we do in a situation where someone resigns in the middle of their term.
No, I agree. I think just an indication at least that it's, there could be an exception to that. Okay. Anyone else? No? We're good? Okay. So we've had our discussion. And we can go to our vote now, yeah? So all those in favor of this action item? Seven, opposed none, motion passes seven zero. Okay, action item number five, Brewster Central School District Professional Learning Plan 2020-2021.
Thank you. We submit to you this evening our district-wide professional learning plan for your approval. This is a yearly document that is uniquely crafted each year in collaboration with the professional learning team. This plan takes the goals that Dr. Banlow shared earlier and uses it as sort of a north star for what our professional learning efforts are throughout the year and specifically on the professional learning days that we have outlined in the calendar. So we, we talked in our professional learning team about really wanting to make sure our professional learning this year is, was ongoing, sustainable, agile, and adaptable to the, the needs of, of the adult learner. So we, we hope that that document, this document reflects this.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion in a second, please. Francine, thank you, and Eric. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, Scott?
And every year, this is worked out between the bargaining units and the administration and the change. So it is very reactive to what the staff wants and it helps them, you know, get the guidelines.
Yes, absolutely.
Anyone else? Seeing none. We can go to the vote. All those in favor? We are seven, any opposed, none, motion passes seven zero. Okay, we move on to the consent agenda.
Yes, thank you. So just briefly, the board will note that we have three longstanding teachers that will be retiring after this school year. Ms. Susan Andres, reading teacher at CB Star with over thirty years of service to the district. Ms. Kim Bertrand, reading teacher at Wells Middle School with over twenty-six years of service to the students of Brewster. And Dr. Marty Craig, our science teacher at Brewster High School with more than twenty-five years of experience serving the children of Brewster. Additionally, Mr. John Butera, a longstanding instrumental music teacher at Wells, has retired effective the start of this school year. Combined, these educators have approximately a century's worth of service to the students of Brewster. We certainly look forward to celebrating their retirement in the spring and we wish them much health and happiness as they prepare for their next chapter.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Scott and Daisy, thank you. Questions or comments on the consent agenda?
Last one question, in regards to the classified section. We have a permanent appointment for the Assistant School Lunch Director, I guess, as of tomorrow, which is also under leave of absence already. Should we wait until they come back from the leave to do the official appointment or this is just one of those semantic things?
Okay, anyone else? All right, seeing none. We can go to the vote. All those in favor? Six, any opposed? Any extensions? One extension. Okay, thank you. Motion passes six zero with one extension. Now we move on to remarks. So public remarks. And this is the time for any additional emails that came in to the board that we can address at this time. So Carrie?
Yes, so we received just a couple of emails since our last meeting. One of them raised the issue of the school's capacity and whether or not special ed kids would be able to return to school more frequently if they've chosen the hybrid level, which, Dr. Gosh, you already addressed in your comments in the beginning, so I don't know if you have anything more to add to that.
Just that we're, we're seriously looking into it and we, it has many layers and that we hope to have more information by the end of this week.
Okay, and then we also received questions relating to the curriculum, I guess, and the, the amount of instruction under the hybrid model. One focusing on the, the high school level with AP courses or other college courses, I guess, Supa or DCC type courses. You know, how that curriculum, because it is set by those colleges, how that's gonna work and under the hybrid scheme?
Yeah, sure. So the answer to that would be that it would vary based on, on the course. I know, for example, some AP courses have set out, okay, for this month, here's the work that's expected. So when you, when courses are meeting on those days, there would be that direct instruction, there would be extension activities. And then there would be other work that students are expected to complete even when that course is, is not meeting. I know, just to speak for the college board, there is, there are some revision underway or some discussion underway about what the assessments would look like considering that the country, right, we're, we're in a similar boat to, to people throughout the country. And then I know WCC and Supa and some of the dual enrollment courses that we have, there is some flexibility when it comes to, to curriculum in terms of how individual professors or teachers can modify that. But for the most part, there is a, you know, a, a hard and fast rule when it comes to that. The expectation would be that students would have to complete work outside of the actual meeting time in order to meet those higher level standards.
Okay, and then the only other question was, again, on the hybrid learning structure and the, the level, the amount of work and structure on home days. And I know you've said, you know, I know you said it in your letter that went out to fifth grade parents and that, that, you know, it's ongoing. But if you, I don't know if there's more to add on.
Yeah, sure. And, and, you know, we appreciate when parents reach out and just say, you know, how can we support our son or daughter in meeting these needs? We want to make sure that they're, they're ready for the next level. And so part of this is, number one, very much a, a work in, in progress. You know, we're up and running, we're already starting that first, you know, feedback loop in terms of getting the focus, focus groups together and, and the surveys next week. So, so that's one component. You know, the other is that there, it's possible that we might not get through all of the curriculum as if it were in a typical school year, similar to what happened last year. So what we have done is we've asked teachers to identify what they call priority standards, which are sort of like weighted standards when it comes to, to curriculum. So if you can master these standards, you would get, let's say, eighty percent of, of what's needed in terms of, of overall curriculum. So those conversations are, are very much ongoing as well. We're also making sure that we pay attention to pacing, especially when it comes to, let's say, K five. And in, in order to make sure that there's parity between students that are in a fully remote and a hybrid model, you know, what would it, what would this look like in a typical year by the end of September? What sort of curriculum would we, would we get to or get through? And then what does it look like now? And how, what are those adjustments based on the priority standards that we have, that we have looked at? So it, there are very much work in, in, in progress. There are ongoing conversations that are happening within the liaison groups and with other teacher representatives. And, you know, we, we are going to need to be constantly adapting to it as we, as we move through the year.
And then, you know, there was one other one, I think, that we got about the, the eighth grade trip to Washington DC. But, and whether or not that would be refundable, but that trip unfortunately was canceled. And I think everyone's been notified that they can get their deposits back. So that, that was all of you.
Okay, great. Thank you. So now we move on to board remarks and committee updates. As Victor mentioned earlier, we had audit this morning, right, that was this morning? It all becomes a blur. And it was a good meeting. And I know he recapped that earlier, so I did want to bring up something, okay. Dr. Banlow, please remind me, and I, I didn't write it down correctly. What's the committee that you have for the community? The key communicators? So I think, was it Scott originally on that? I just wanted to ask the board, because I, Scott, you're, you, you take on everything that kind of, if it's thrown out there, like, yeah, okay, I'll do it. I know you're on the, the equity committee that we have now as our liaison for that. And you also do, I know a lot of, you spend a lot of time with the different legislative outlets that we have. So I just, you know, and this is nothing, these are in addition to the committees we've already outlined. So I just want to at least do a check in, because I know Dr. Banlow's, you know, it's a new year and continue with that. And I don't know, did we outline this at Reorg? I don't remember if this was one of those that we outlined offhand, because I want at least either giving, you know, you the opportunity to say, okay, I, I've got way too much on my plate, and maybe if somebody else wants to, to jump in there. Or switch with one of the other things that you have, if someone wanted to. Because, you know, like Jason, you were in the equity thing, but then you stopped when you got on the board. I just wanted to throw it out there for just a conversation, because I know, Scott, you're awesome and you take it all on, but you don't have to. Jason?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I, I am on the audit committee. But I would love to, I think I said before, I would love to help Scott with the legislate.
Right, so that's open to anyone on the board. I mean, he's just like, definitely go-to, things are happening, he's on that pulse. But, I mean, in the past, there were many roundtable discussions with the different politicians. And we could all go, my habit, and we could, you know, go. So that's definitely there. But the, the other committee work, we need someone committed to that. And there's, I think, three dates, if I saw up in the email.
I can, I can do some of that. Yeah, I would like to do some of that. Sure.
Yeah, that's, I was just doing it because to me it was a spin-off of the whole legislation piece. I'd be more than happy to let Jason do that if he wishes to. And, you know, I'll fill you on whatever. And if I could just give some legislative updates.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, so that's resolved. We're good. Thank you.
I missed a couple, because I went on some school, I'm more senior, went on some school trips. But they have some more coming up. What I'm looking to do, based upon what the, the information that Dr. Banlow's working on with the Key Communicators Panel, if we put together, combined with what we're doing, some type of newsletter. So maybe it's more focused and that we could forward to, I know when the, we get the student paper, we forward it to our, the senators and the different legislature of offices, just to keep them in the know, to let them know what Brewster is up to. And what the, if we can come together with something, if we come to the agreement that this is what we're doing, then we could forward it to the, you know, the different legislatures, the local groups above and beyond the key communicators, you know, just, and I know last year we had Senator Harkeman. He came in for a meeting and we were one week away from having Senator Mayor in. And that was canceled, obviously, because of what occurred. If there's a way, maybe, once it calms down, if it ever does, maybe arrange something Zoom or something for the students as well. So they keep us on their forefront. So Senator Harkeman, Senator Mayor, who's in charge of education, remembers us and keeps it going and goes, okay, Brewster, I went there, I spoke to those kids. Plus, we get an outlet for the students. I mean, if the world goes good, they'll be looking for people to work in Albany with them, do other pieces with them. And then we have other outlets for our, our students. So we could maybe work towards something of that type.
Just, that's a great idea. I think, you know what, Zoom? Thanks for suggesting it.
That way they can still, and it probably makes them easier, because he's like, some of them are all over the place. So if they could just, you know, sit in his office for five minutes, hit a couple of schools, and then maybe it also, he'll go, you know, I could do this with lots of other schools. So this is something he can open up to cover the area. He'll look, you know, politicians are always looking for ways to look good.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we give them an out there. And if I could also, only if there is a statement on us being open, I would like to, I also. And if I could also, only if there is a statement on us being open, I would like to, I, I also appreciate it. It's great to have my daughter out of the house again. And it's three weeks in, we're getting better. Every week's better, and I understand there's a lot of bumps and hurdles and things that it's not perfect. But our district is open, others aren't. So you just have to remember, take a grain of salt, just keep up the work and let everybody know that that's where we're working. Related to that, I saw the notes about the special ed department. I couldn't be happier that we're working to get the kids who really need to be in school into school as much as possible. So whatever the board, not the, I can't speak for the board, whatever I can do personally or through the board to support such an action, I would be more than happy to work on. I wanted to also, what events in the census, once again, we're down to the end, please, 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 fill out the census, it's extremely important. I wanted to thank the PTA, because they took our notice that we were taking and sending out the information to ask for federal, uh, aid and representation. And they forwarded that to their members. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of that, and I would also ask everybody to please, especially during this time, join your school's PTA. They need a lot of help, even if it's just financial. There's a lot they do, so we really need to support them as much as we can, and just, uh, continue to go ahead and protect the bear den.
Thank you. Anyone else? No?
I do.
Yeah?
Just real quick. I don't feel like it's been a whole quarter. I feel like we should be in November by now, but it's only day eleven
Yeah.
of actual school year in person. And I'm amazed with already how much it's evolved from day one to day eleven. So I'm, I'm super hopeful that every week we're seeing a huge difference. I just wanted to remind everybody out there that this has really been such a small amount of time, no matter how long it's felt.
That's it. Thank you. Anyone else? Nope? Okay. Um, so just, um, I don't have my calendar in front of me, our next meeting, October thirteenth. Okay, our next board meeting is October thirteenth. And, um, as always, uh, everyone is welcome to email the board and the superintendent at boe@brewsterschools.org. And, um, we do not have executive session following this meeting, so we can just, uh, take a motion to adjourn. Scott, thank you, I need a second, uh, Jason, thank you, and, um, all those in favor? And that's seven of us, so we are, motion passes, we are adjourned, thank you.